2022 Planning Commission Public Hearing. My name is Jack Wall and I'm the chairman of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. Commissioner David Redman and John Coston will not be in attendance today. Before we get started, I've asked Commissioner Quayle to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Horsley. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today with gratitude and thanking you for your guidance and wisdom. As we begin this hearing today, we ask that you guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Help us to remember our responsibility to serve our community with insight guided by understanding, wisdom and respect for all. As we make our decisions today, help us to promote the common good as we work together for the betterment of our great city. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and our efforts here today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've asked Commissioner Frankenfield to introduce the members of the Planning Commission.
That it? Anybody hear me? All right. Good afternoon, welcome. I'd like to introduce the Planning Commission, and I have it written down, so I have to follow exactly what I wrote. Next to me is David Bradley, representing the Princeess Anne District, and he's the retired budget director. He knows where all the money is. Next to him is David Weiner, Kempesville District, employed in construction sales, and he is one of the tireless community advocates we have. He's everywhere. He's really involved. Dee Oliver, also a tireless community advocate, is at-large, an active author and a funeral director. George Alcaraz is a vice chair. He's the Beach District, local businessperson involved with restaurants, special events and building contractor business. Got anything else? All right, good. All right. Jack Wall is the chair, and he has just been promoted to captain in the reserves. Congratulations. And he is a civil engineer with the Army Corps of Engineers and represents the Rosemont District. The next two are not here, and Holly Quayle is at-large. She's a political consultant and a military spouse, and she reminded me today that her carrot cake did win first place at the Virginia State Fair. So she is supposedly making some carrot cake soon. Michael Clemmons is from the Centerville District. He's a professor of political science at Old Dominion University. It's good to have people that are actually smart on this group, so thank you for being here. Kay Wilson is the deputy city attorney and is a stellar advocate and understands the law and helps keep us all out of trouble. Thank you very much. How did I miss Mr. Horsley?
He didn't write it down.
I didn't write it down. You're not here.
He's not here.
Mr. Horsley is not on my list. So is at-large and is our resident farmer, even though we don't think of him as a farmer. If we want to ask a farmer question, that's who we ask it to. And he is the longest-running member of the Planning Commission. We think it's like 40 years or something, and we don't remember, so thank you very much for your service. I'm sorry I forgot you.
Don't worry about it.
Oh, I'm Barry Frankenfield. I'm a landscape architect, represent Lynn Haven District, and next to me is Bobby Tahan, who is one of the most knowledgeable and caring planning directors we've ever had. So thank you very much, Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. Frankenfield. And I'll introduce staff. Clerking today, we have Pam Sandloop and Madison Harris. Sorry, it's been a long week. Clerking today, we have, with the planning staff, we have Hannah Sabo, our zoning administrator with Planning Administration, Carolyn Smith, Wadell, Marshall Coleman, Michaela McKinney, and Elizabeth Nowak with our zoning division, Garrick Hannigan and Brandon Hackley. And we have Victoria Eisenberg as well with the City Attorney's Office.
Okay, thank you. Next, I've asked the clerk to describe the rules and order of business for today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It's equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. We request that cell phones be put on silent during this meeting. Following is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. The Order of Business for this public hearing, withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent Agenda. The second order of business is a consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular Agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or their representative first. Following the applicant or their representative, speakers will be called next. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. Please note that the actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next order of business is a consideration of requests to withdraw or defer an item. Please come forward if you have any items to be withdrawn. Seeing none, please come forward if you have any items to be deferred. It's been brought to our attention that agenda items number eight through 14 have requested a 30-day deferral. Does anybody have any objection for these items to be deferred? Do I have a motion to defer items eight through 14 for 30 days?
Motion to defer 30 days for eight through 14.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Alcaraz and a second by Mr. Weiner.
Thank you. The vote is open. By a vote of nine to zero, agenda items eight through 14 have been deferred for 30 days.
Okay, thank you. Next order of business is the consent agenda, and I'm going to turn the consent agenda over to the vice chair to run that portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we have seven items on the consent agenda. These items are applications that are recommended for approval by staff, and the planning commission has concurred, and there are no speakers signed up for the opposition of the agenda item. So moving on. Item number one, MM Rollins and Company for rezoning at 652 Princeess Anne Road. All those come forward, please speak. Say your name.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Alcaraz. Mr. Chairman, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing MM Rollins and Company. Mr. Rollins appreciates being on the consent agenda, saved him coming up from Creeds for the meeting today, and appreciates your good work. Do I have to answer any questions?
Conditions acceptable. Thank you.
It's acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Mr. Bradley to read this item for the record.
Okay, thank you. The applicant owns one parcel totaling 38,812 square feet that is zoned both AG2 and B2. The proposal is to rezone a portion of that site, currently zoned AG2 Agricultural District to B2 Community Business District. The overall property was originally two separate parcels. In May of 1985, a plat was recorded that consolidated both parcels into one lot. A portion of that parcel, specifically the B2 zone area, has been operating as a legally non-conformant auto sales and service business since the early 1950s, prior to the merger of the City of Virginia Beach and Princeess Anne County. Future use of the newly rezoned portion of the site, as well as the existing B2 zone portion of the site, will be required to comply with those identified in the zoning ordinance. Furthermore, the applicant's representative indicated that is the property owner's intent that any future use will be in keeping with the goals and policies set forth in the comprehensive plan for the rural area of the city, specifically the rural village of Creeds. The planning staff recommended this item, and since there's no known opposition, we're recommending putting it on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. The next item is number two, CP Marine Diesel Services for modification of conditions at 1399 Air Rail Avenue. Is there a representative here to speak? Please come forward. Sir, if you could state your name for the record.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Carl Pitt, Jr. I am the shop foreman and treasurer for CP Marine and Diesel.
All right, and do you accept the conditions?
Yes.
All right, thank you. You may be seated.
Good, thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I asked Commissioner Quayle to read this item for the record, please.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to modify conditions of a conditional use permit for an automobile repair garage that was approved by city council on July 7, 2015. These modifications more accurately reflect the business and focus on parking spaces, usage and storage. Being that there's no opposition, the commission recommends this be put on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item is number three for Green Clean Shore LLC for a conditional use permit at 4769 Shore Drive. Is there a representative here to speak? Please come forward. Hi, if you could state your name for the record.
Grace Haverly.
Thank you. And are the conditions acceptable to you?
They are acceptable.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Mr. Frankenfield to please read this item for the record.
All right, thank you. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a car wash facility at 4769 Shore Drive. Currently, it is a surface parking lot. The property is zoned B2 and is located along Pleasure House Road in the Shore Drive Corridor Overlay District. The applicant, Clean Green Car Wash, has worked extensively with staff and the Bayfront Advisory Commission to come up with an attractive, well-thought-out plan that is appropriately screened and signed. And since the Bayfront, not since, but the Bayfront Advisory Group proposed approval of the plan, and staff does also, as planning commission, we represent approval on consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item is number four for Russell A. Brown for a conditional use permit at 1212 Sycamore Road. Is there a representative here? Please come forward. State your name for the record.
Russell A. Brown.
Thank you. Are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes.
Thank you. You may be seated. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked again Mr. Frankenfield to please read this for the record.
All right, thank you very much. The applicant's request is for a conditional use permit for a home occupation for a firearms sales and gunsmithing business within the attached garage of a single-family dwelling. Staff's opinion is that will not negatively alter the character of the neighborhood, will not adversely affect the surrounding properties. Most, not all, of the neighboring residents support this activity, and for everybody's information, this type of work is highly regulated by the federal government, as well as monitored by local police. So there is no concern, not no concern, but there is, it is supported by staff and the neighbors. So we propose to put this on consent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is number five for Virginia Aquarium Foundation for a conditional use permit at 801 General Booth Boulevard. Please come forward and state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Cynthia Spanoulis, and I represent the Virginia Aquarium Foundation.
Okay, great. And the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Mr. Clemmons to please read this for the record.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a wind energy conversion system known as Wind Turbine for a new outdoor watershed exhibit at South Building at the Virginia Aquarium. The 25.7-acre property along General Booth Boulevard is on P1 Preservation District and is within the resort area strategic growth area. The Virginia Aquarium first opened in 1986, and it provides marine research, conservation, educational resources to teachers and students. Given staff's recommendation and no apparent opposition, the commission placed this item on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next item is number six, Sacred Daggers for alternative compliance at 529 Virginia Beach Boulevard. Is there a representative here to speak for this item? Is this the item that there wasn't going to be a representative? Correct. And for the record, they've accepted the conditions? Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I asked Dee Oliver to please read this for the record.
Thank you. This is a request for an alternative compliance, a tattoo parlor located at 529 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Vibe District. This application is requesting a special exception of alternative compliance for a tattoo parlor as the use is not expressly listed in the table of the Oceanfront Resort Form Based Code. The applicant will be providing a traditional costume tattooing services. The property is zoned OR, Oceanfront Resort, and it is within the Vibe Creative District. The proposed tattoo parlor will employ eight tattoo artists. The hours of operation will be 12 p.m. to 8 p.m. Tuesdays through Saturday. The business will be operated by appointment only and do not accept walk-in clients. There will also be an art gallery in the lobby to display original artwork prints by the resident artist. The applicant is proposing to remodel the interior, upfit the facade of the structure, and to add new exterior walls, signage and mural work consistent, whoops, hold on. Paper, there's a lot to be said for paper. Consistent with the Vibe Creative District. The applicant has received a letter of approval from the Vibe Creative District Board and the Friends of Creative District Board. The boards endorse the artist's tattoo business, as the operation will be conducted by appointment only and concentrated on custom artwork tattoos with high-level focus on original artwork specializing in providing art therapy to patients with medical scars and military veterans. For this reason stated above, the staff is recommending approval of this application, subject to the conditions listed, and the applicant has agreed to those, and therefore we have agreed to place it on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. The next item is number seven for Sean Andrew Maslany at 1724 Baltic Avenue for short-term rental. Is there a representative here to speak? Afternoon, if you just...
Thanks for having me. I'm Sean Maslany, the applicant. Yeah, I appreciate you guys having me. Yeah, I approve the recommended conditions, or I accept them.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Appreciate it.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I asked Mr. Weiner to please read this for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Alcaraz. This is a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 1724 Baltic Avenue. It is in the OR district, therefore we have placed this on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that was the last item for the consent agenda. The Planning Commission places the following applications on the consent agenda. Items one, two, three, four, five, six and seven.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve my consent as read by the vice chair?
Chairman, I move that these items be approved for consent.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Alcaraz, a second by Mr. Horsley. Is there anybody that needs to abstain? Any planning commissioner that needs to abstain from these items on the consent agenda? You need to hit the second button right there.
I was the mover on that one.
I think, yeah, I was not the mover. My finger accidentally hovered on the button.
Okay. Okay, so the vote is open. We'll just proceed.
By a vote of nine in favor, zero against, agenda items one, two, three, four, five, six and seven have all been recommended for approval. I consent.
Okay, thank you. If you had an application that was on the consent agenda, your request will now be scheduled for an upcoming city council meeting. Staff will contact you about the date. For those applicants on the consent agenda, thank you for your participation, and you may remain in the meeting either virtually or in person, but you're free to leave. Thanks. The next order of business is the regular agenda, and we have no items on the regular agenda. So, Madam Clerk, we don't necessarily need to, you know, have any additional business. But it's, I think that generally would conclude the meeting. We have one additional item, though, and that is after, I think we're ready to move on to this. After 30 years, you know, somebody in the planning commission or planning department is retiring. So Carolyn, you know, we appreciate, you know, your efforts, you know, everything that you've done for, you know, this body, you know, the Planning Commission. You know, a lot of people have been here, you know, almost the entire time that you've been here. You know, Mr. Horsley has been here quite a bit, but the time that I've been on, you know, I felt that, you know, your efforts have been outstanding. You know, I'm super impressed by your, you know, just your commitment, your wisdom, you know, your calmness, you know, always, and your absolute, you know, perfect and, you know, absolute and perfect reliability. You know, it's been, you know, a great benefit, like I said, to myself and, you know, I'm sure to the other planning commissioners, your service has been exemplary. And it's hard to see you go, but we wish you well and are thankful that we just had, you know, the time, you know, that you were able to support us, you know, while I was, you know, on the Planning Commission, while you were able to do so. But with that, you know, we have, you know, a kind of a token of our appreciation for your efforts, a small gesture, but if you don't mind, you know, coming up and accepting it, you know, we appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
So does anybody have anything else to say for...
If I say something, I might cry. Yeah, you're not upstaging me.
I'm not going to cry. I'm not going to cry.
I'll say something. I work with Carolyn in the 90s when I was working for the planning department, and she just got hired, and we were excited to have her. And then I was on the board of zoning for 15 years, and that was a great experience too with you. So we're going to miss you, and congratulations.
Well, I could be up here for about an hour, but we'll cut it short. Just want to say thank you very much. You taught me a lot over the last nine, 10 years I've been here. Very smart. The City of Virginia Beach is losing a really good person with a lot of knowledge, and we appreciate everything you've done for me, except for that one time you did yell at me and told me me and Dee were having too much fun up here. But, but I'm okay, I don't have any feelings, but we're going to miss you. And not to take anything away from you, but we do want to say one other thing real quick. Congratulations to Madison for getting married in your marriage. Welcome back. But didn't want to take anything away from you on your retirement. Just wanted to tell you that. But thank you, good luck in the future. Hope we see, if we come down and, you know, down to visit you sometime.
So I am going to say a little something. But I do want to say that not only are you a fine, incredible asset to the City of Virginia Beach as an employee of 30 years, but also as a citizen of Virginia Beach and a friend to all of us. We've all been extremely blessed to have you in our lives, whether as a coworker or as a friend, and you bring to the table so many wonderful gifts and qualities. And we will truly, truly miss you. There'll be a void that will never be replaced by you, and we hope, we're probably sure you won't come back and visit. But if you'd like to extend the invitation, we can collectively raise some money so that you can build an extra bedroom so that we can take turns coming to visit. But we do love you and we admire you and we respect you and thank you for sharing part of your life with us.
And Carolyn, I just want to thank you too for welcoming me. You were incredibly kind and generous when I was first appointed, and I can't help but think, you know, over a 30-year tenure, the opportunities that maybe weren't as available for women and for just leading that charge and being an example for all women to look up to, being a subject matter expertise, and I just want to thank you for the kindness, not only personally but professionally, that you've extended to me.
Carolyn, it's, I guess I've been around longer than you have, but we, I appreciate what you have, what you have done and, and just the planning department over the years has been a great group of people to work with. And until the last four, five years, it was a stable group, but a lot of retirements have taken place and all. And Carolyn, I told her this morning, I said, you're one of the last ones of my group to be around and, and that understand the things and that had been around long enough to learn the things. And that's so important to the people from the rural sector of Virginia Beach, because there's a lot that you learn from experience about what's going on down south, and you can't read all that in books. And Carolyn was one of those few of many that understood that, and we really appreciate that, and good luck. Thank you. I got something. I got something. Hey! So Carolyn, everybody else has said all these nice things about you. I don't actually have any bad things to say. Yeah, we are. But Carolyn came to me maybe 25 years ago in Parks and Recreation and was looking for a job, and I didn't hire her. And I was always disappointed that I didn't. So I was thrilled when I got to work with her again. She makes it look so easy and is so friendly with everybody. It's an enjoyable experience. So thank you very much.
If I can, Mr. Wall, I'll just add something in. What many may not know is that when I did my internship, my second stint of college, because I flunked out of my first stint, Carolyn, I interned in the planning department, and I actually wrote a staff report for Carolyn when she was in her first stint with current planning. And so she does not remember that, but I remember it because, guess what? I was interning and learning the ropes. And so that was about 2005. And so it was, it was, for people that do what Carolyn does as a planning administrator, there's two folks that I've worked with, and they have the same exact personalities. Quite interesting in different localities, but definitely how Carolyn has led this group, as well as kept us out of trouble by her steady hand and stern talking at times, right? Because we have to make sure that we've, we get things squared away, because it's not just affecting us, what we do, but it's affecting the citizens and our applicants. And so Carolyn always kept that in mind, as she always, as she always helped everybody the best that she could. And so Carolyn, we will miss you. We, it's, we wish you well on your next step, but again, maybe we should, I'll try to visit at one point in time, so.
You're all welcome. In my short term. Thank you.